February 19th, West Des Moines City Council Meeting. Please join us for the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, please sign in, and I know we have Renee on the phone.
Yes, I am present.
We have three members present in the chamber and one on the phone. All right, Ryan, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes, Your Honor.
Okay, can I get a motion?
Move approval of the agenda as distributed.
Take it.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
For yes.
All right, item two is citizens forum, which is the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the city council on any item that's not part of public hearings, which are Agenda Item Six and our new business Agenda Item Seven. All right, then we'll move on to city council, city manager reports, Kevin.
Nothing at this time.
Hey, Russ?
Nothing at this time, Your Honor.
John?
Not at this time, Your Honor.
Renee?
I just want to say I'm sorry that I'm not able to be there today, but I am recovering from knee surgery, otherwise I would be there.
Well, thanks for joining us and keep your foot up.
Yeah, it's being elevated as we speak.
Tom?
Here for you, Your Honor.
Okay, item four is the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member on the city council would like to pull? Otherwise, I'll take a motion for all of them.
So move.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Second.
You spoke.
For yes.
All right, item five, old business. Item 5A, Amendment to City Code Title IX, zoning, Chapter Five, agricultural, open space and residential zoning district, and Chapter Ten, performance standards, eliminate garage requirement for multifamily condominium regime development. City initiated, this is an ordinance for the third reading and final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration, third reading.
For a second?
Second.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
For yes, North Amendment in City Code, the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Five, agricultural, open space and residential zoning district, and Chapter Ten, performance standards to eliminate garage requirement for multifamily condominium regime developments.
Move approval, third reading and adopt in final form.
For a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
For yes.
All right, item 5B, Continental Plaza 7300, West Town Parkway rezone approximately 1.08 acres from Professional Commerce Park to support commercial. Penta Partners LLC, it's an ordinance for approval of the second, third reading, final adoption, and we'll have everyone re-sign in. Jim's joined us, but in the interim, Lynn, it might be helpful if you just came up and shared with us what the discussion's been the last two weeks and give us a little bit of an overview on where we stand with this.
Sign in while we're...
Yeah, go ahead and sign in while we're...
Okay, Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services. Really, since the last time you met, a couple weeks ago, we received a proposal, this is 7300 West Town Parkway, 7100 West Town Parkway, so the proposal that you were voting on last time is up here in this corner here. Jordan Creek Parkway is on the far west, right left-hand side here, West Town Parkway is on the north here. Since the last meeting, the thing that has come to us is we had a request to look at from 7100 West Town, which is the NAP properties, of whether or not they could also put in a support commercial parcel up here out there northwest corner. We haven't had a chance to look at it from a traffic standpoint, so a traffic study would have to be done before we could do anything with it. Our concern was just that we don't end up with a support commercial here, an office piece here, another support commercial here, another office piece. So if the traffic works, and this is something that they want to pursue and the council's comfortable with it, we would recommend that we would do support commercial all the way up to this driveway and stop it there. We do have some concerns with that commercial creep kind of working its way down West Town, so we'd like a clearly defined stop point. It actually works out well, because just to the north is all support commercial within the Hy-Vee PUB that's up there, so it does make some sense to be able to do that. So we initially looked at that and gave some responses to the NAP properties. Then just recently, it has gone from a support commercial to possibly a two-acre office parcel with putting another building at the front there. Again, we haven't done any kind of traffic analysis of it, it would all have to be studied. As long as they can meet zoning, we don't have an issue with that office happening. As far as the interconnect, we've expressed to NAP properties that when we're saying there needs to be an interconnect, it does not have to be a frontage road, it just really has to be a driveway connection through parking lots. Just a way for people to get from one parcel across to another, doesn't have to be a lineup with anything in particular. There is actually an easement on this one that's been platted already. If it shifts, we would just have to go in and vacate that easement at such time that we know where it's going. So that's really the main thing. The last issue that came up is about the traffic signal at 71st and West Town. The thought is, over time, that there may be enough traffic generated through that corridor that a signal may be warranted. At this point, it's really not there, and there still is a full access on the 7100, 7300 parcel, so they have that full access today. The coffee shop is actually generating less than what the office would generate if you were to add extra office into that site. Again, we have to do all the studies, there's nothing that warrants it, but typical city practice would be is, traffic signals are paid by non-residential properties, so the properties at the four corners of this intersection of 71st and West Town would be the ones that are paying for that signal. City traditionally has not paid for signals unless it's something like the Jordan Creek Town Center or something that has a TIF project that truly is generating that income and justifying that need for it, so...
Okay, so for purposes of the Penta Partner rezoning, are they actually putting less traffic on the system than was allowed under the prior zoning?
That is my understanding, but I'd have to go back and check the traffic study. Brian may have some insight on that one, but that is my understanding.
Is that true, Brian?
Less traffic is being generated.
Okay, so again, I mean, if, and I know Chris is here, but if NAP's looking for changes that they need more traffic, actually this rezoning's going to help them, because there's less traffic being generated on Penta's property than would have been allowed before. So it's actually helping, I think, what NAP properties would want to do, subject to the studies.
Potentially, yes.
And as far as the traffic signal then, since they're putting less traffic on there and they have a full access, I guess the question is, and they're off the corner, but I guess that's a discussion for another day, if and when the traffic signal's needed.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So I know, Chris, you weren't here last time, is there anything you want to share with us?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'm not sure if anybody's here from Penta, but we'd be happy to hear from them again, and I know they're under some time pressures, and this has been around for almost a year now.
Chris Costa, 5000 West Town Parkway, Suite 400, West Des Moines. We did meet with Penta, I think it was last week, and discussed some of our concerns. We own this site, the 7100 West Town site, in a partnership with Farm Bureau, so it's NAP Properties and Farm Bureau, and the access that is drawn here really cobbled up our site. We have, when we initially built this facility, it was for Sears Credit Card Processing Center, they needed exorbitant parking, so we provided that on the site. Since Sears has vacated, we've re-tenanted it, and we do still have substantial parking commitments, but it wasn't the way we built it at eight to one, I think, so I think we need five and a half to one. Where this access was drawn, as you can see, it just kind of came in mid-parking lot, and it would require some changes to our site. The bigger problem we had with access issue was, we had always planned on putting another building on this site because of the parking we had available. We had approximately, right along here, the opportunity to add 40,000 square foot of office and still be able to have a viable site with the parking that we'd put in. So the access coming through here was going to cobble up the parking lot a little bit, that concerned us. We talked to Lynn, she'd indicated that really they didn't care about having a clear path of egress out of the Penta site, that it could wind through our parking lot. Obviously, that's not the greatest scenario, but that gives you a little comfort that you still might be able to do the building that we had planned there. When we met with Penta, we'd asked them for, there was two things that were kind of a hang-up on our part. One is where they'd access our site. So we offered up maybe the possibility of the access coming down here towards the south end of this map, which would give it a more clear path exiting the site, we think it's more safe. Penta was agreeable and open to that. The second part was the traffic signal issue. Now, unfortunately, we've gotten so many different viewpoints from the city on this, potentially, when the signals might go in. We've been told by one of the staff people that they wanted it sooner than later, if they get this coffee shop on the corner. And I don't disagree with Brian that on the traffic counts, I'm sure he's knowledgeable about that, but we were told and informed that closing this access along West Town is something that the city wanted to do before it created more issues with traffic. And that dates, I think, to a lot of issues that have been built up over the past 10 years, just with traffic moving west on West Town Parkway. So when we heard that, obviously it gave us a little reason for alarm, because as we all know, these signals are 75 to 100,000 per corner on a four-corner type street. So here's a couple hundred thousand of potential expense to Farm Bureau and NAP properties, and we don't receive any direct benefit. Our site handles its traffic, we've never had a complaint with people entering or exiting, so it's not something that we would ever ask the city to come on our property and put in traffic signals, because we don't need them. So the second part of the conversation with Penta is, what are we going to do about the cost of this signal? And we had discussed that our group would talk to the city about coming up with some arrangement, possibly a development agreement, where the obligation was shifted to the city. And these conversations took place rather quickly, because I understood today that, or yesterday, that Penta wanted to get the second, third readings handled tonight. Well, that causes us a little grief. We've not come to a resolution on the traffic signal side of it. We think that's hugely inequity to, or huge inequity to Farm Bureau and NAP to be responsible if and when those lights are needed, when the benefit is not something that would be attached to our property.
Even if you build that 40,000 square foot office building? That's number 200 people.
I mean, that could change things, yeah.
And if they're putting less traffic on the system?
Well, that then becomes a city issue. I mean, if you were to tell us that you'll never need a signal until you improve your site, that would change our opinion. But if you're telling us, we're going to wait and see how the traffic patterns develop, and the city staff has already got in their mind that they want it sooner than later, then it's a different conversation.
Well, we usually wait until they hit warrants, unless there's a safety issue and the council asks for them to be put in. Would it, I mean, if we did the second reading tonight and waited two weeks for the third reading, can we get the, can we get the traffic count issue figured out between now and then? Again, I don't want to hold up, if they're putting less traffic on the system than currently, why is it their issue, and I don't want to hold them up.
Right.
But at the same time, if the Penta development ends up resulting in the need for a traffic light, then it goes on to NAP Properties, Farm Bureau, Hy-Vee, and Wells Fargo to pay for that, and it's not even their development. So I, I mean, what would make sense, and I don't want to hold Penta Partners up either, but it seems to me that there needs to be a discussion amongst the property owners involved here as to, you know, who's going to pay for these lights, and it's not going to be the city, if and when they're needed. You know, I hope that discussion will be had, and maybe we won't need lights in here. But if we do...
Brian, why don't you, before we call Penta, why don't you help us understand how we can figure out when this traffic signal's going to be warranted, and how you decide who's causing the demand for it? And are they going to continue to have a full access? Is Penta continuing to have a whole, a full access at that location? I mean, Chris just mentioned filling in the median, which I'm not sure, I mean, we just cut two medians out at West Plant and Overby, so I don't think personally, we're big fans with creating medians and forcing people to go where they don't want to go. So what's the conversation about their full access to their coffee shop?
Right, Brian Hemisath, city engineer. The access that Penta currently has, it's a full access, that, that won't be closed until things start happening, such as accidents, or, you know, things that require, there's warrants for closing medians as well as putting in traffic signals. So there hasn't been any accidents actually at that, or there's been accidents, but not the angle-type crashes in the last 10 years at that intersection. We checked those records just before we came down. So we don't anticipate there being, it basically acts as its own median. When the traffic backs up through there, people pull up to it and they're like, I don't really want to deal with that, so they, they find other ways to get out. So we're not in any big hurry to close that median, and we're not in any big hurry to put a traffic signal in at the 71st Street location either. It really depends on, like you said, you're absolutely right, the warrants are what, what moves forward to put traffic signals in, and we aren't anywhere close to meeting those warrants, and we don't believe that the additional, or it's not even additional traffic, it's the development that's proposed in the Penta Partners area is actually less than what was previously approved. It's less than what was out there before. We don't anticipate that causing the need for it, definitely won't if the, if the connection isn't made, and the connection can't be made until NAP Properties, Farm Bureau property comes in for development.
So when, when, when they come in with the site plan, then we can figure out where the best interconnect is between the two developments?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, it seems like since Penta's got their own full access, they're putting less traffic on the system than they currently could allow, and we're not sure if we ever have to do anything else. I'm not sure that, I mean, I'm not sure we should do anything other than approve this and let it move forward. And then when NAP comes in with a site plan, we can figure out how much traffic that is and where the demand and warrants are, and figure out what we can do to make sure it's going to function. As I've always said, the developer wants it to function better than the city does, because the developer can't get anybody to rent from them if it doesn't work.
Right.
So they're the ones that are more interested in making sure it works versus the city, but it just seems like we're looking for a solution right now that we don't have a problem for.
Correct.
I agree.
But I, I'm worried that if there is, if there is an issue, if it comes to that, and this development actually is the one that puts us over the top and warrants the signal, at that point in time, the people that are going to be paying for the signal aren't the ones that did the development. The people that did the development aren't going to have to pay anything towards the signal, correct? It's going to be the four, the owners on the four corners.
That's typically how the assessment for traffic signals are done, correct? So yes, Penta Partners...
You could do an area assessment and allocate it out, depending, I mean, I think what you, just spread it out, where the traffic's coming from. If it's not these four corners, where's it coming from?
But what happens if the development goes forward, signals warranted, NAP Properties and Farm Bureau say, hey, we didn't, we didn't create this, we're not paying. Penta says, we're not paying, it's not our responsibility. Then what happens? Do we come in as a city and assess not only the four corners, but also Penta?
You have a right to do that, whether you do it or not, but, I mean, that would be the way to do it.
And there'd be rhyme or reason, because we would ask our traffic engineers to do a determination of where the traffic is coming from, who's generating the need for it.
I mean, we know what it is now, we'll know what it is after the development comes in, and we'll know what it is years down the line.
Right, we can, we can do traffic, we can do traffic counts as they exist at the time, or we can, we can do it based on what, what our traffic counts are from the, from the IT manuals that we have and use for, for projecting that.
Well, and if I was still around, I'd want to know what the general traffic is from the city, that's a busy street. And if half of it's just general traffic for the city, the city ought to pay half the cost of the light. I mean, if it's, 50% is just through traffic, going from Jordan Creek Parkway to 60th, or wherever they're going, there's a general benefit to the community, we, the city pays for the general benefit, but you're not going to know that unless and until you get there.
Except for we've never done that before.
Well, we've done it on street projects.
But for the developments surrounding the area, though, that, that traffic signal wouldn't be needed.
Well, it just seems like it's, why don't we wait and figure out if we ever need it, because you may never, you may never need it.
I would agree with that.
So to that point, I sense some uncertainty with Chris, the sooner rather than later comment, so I don't know where he heard...
It wouldn't have been from anybody in engineering.
Okay, and I suspect that, I don't want to put words in his mouth, but I suspect that the, the uncertainty of that just helps them not be able to solve for the equation of what's missing here, and so...
I read through every traffic study that, that we have on these, on these properties before I came to the meeting, and there's, there's nothing that, that states sooner rather than later, or anything about an urgency, it just states that it may be needed in the future.
Well, let me ask Penta, who's here on behalf of Penta? I got a question for Penta then. I mean, if we just do the second reading right now and give you guys time and to meet and discuss this whole thing a little bit further, what is, what does that do to you? I mean, it's going to be a two-week delay, essentially. How detrimental is two weeks?
Travis Sisson with Penta Partners, 5700 University Avenue, West Des Moines. It's significant. I'm not sure, you know, going through this the last couple weeks or last month, I'm not sure what another couple weeks would help, because we're still talking about things that haven't happened. So, you know, how do we forecast for something that hasn't happened? We've got traffic studies that we paid for, you know, from the city of West Des Moines that shows that there's actually a decrease in traffic, based on how we're developing out the site. You know, so we're a little bit confused of why we're stuck, you know, in this process. When we got a full P&amp;Z recommendation, you know, in front of you guys, we've done everything on the engineering front. Part of, and I don't know how familiar everybody is with the site, but part of this development, when we started, was as we've actually increased circulation in that area. It was a 12-acre site. We've now got connections on Lake, we've got connections on Jordan Creek and West Town. You know, so our purpose was to have better circulation within the parking lot itself and, and the surrounding streets. One of the items I think that NAP Properties forgets is, these are cross-easements, so if it ever does happen, they also have access to us, which will take some of the burden off the city streets in different areas as well, you know, depending on where people are going, and we're going to have to deal with their traffic, which we have no issue with. The reason for where the, where the connection is currently is just because that's where City of West Des Moines wanted it. We have talked to Chris and NAP Properties of telling them, we'll go anywhere you want to make that connection, it doesn't matter to us, we've already got the concrete, so we want to make it work.
Which, it seems to make sense to wait until they bring in a site plan.
Right.
And quite frankly, I mean, if they build a 40,000 square foot office building, those people are going to want to access your coffee shop. I mean, that's an amenity for your office building, to have that there, instead of having to go to Hy-Vee or somewhere else.
Right.
Yeah, who would we, who would we assess if they didn't come to an agreement on this? Who would we assess? How many different parcels would be assessed in this? I can't imagine it'd just be the five then, would it, or?
If they do a traffic study, I think it's speeding in the water. Right. And then they would be apportioned appropriately, you know.
So could it go all the way down to merchants bonding?
Theoretically, it could, yeah. I mean, if you found that the traffic was feeding that way, based on the traffic study, but, you know, what specific benefit they're getting, so...
So that, so that's what would happen, though, if these guys couldn't agree on who was going to share this. We'd go and assess.
Yep, right.
So these guys could have some liability, they could have some liability, and they're just not going to know that.
I think maybe tonight is, if somebody could, sorry, go ahead.
This is Renee, if I could jump in and ask a question. I also thought I heard the mayor indicated that West Des Moines would also have some burden in this, depending on what is the result of the study.
He said we could have, yes.
Yeah, this general, yeah, the general benefit.
So that is responsibility.
Except for, except for that that would completely break precedent, because we've never done that before.
But I think, Russ, the difference is, historically, it's 25% a corner. If we do an assessment, we look at the general benefit to the city, so we're not going to follow the old policy, if we're going to look at who benefits pays here, and that opens up the analysis for a general benefit for the city.
And we understand that.
But if I might, Mr. Mayor, I think two questions, Brian and probably Lynn, is, this won't meet warrants anytime soon, so to give them some comfort, I think the city is looking for some, or they're looking for some assurance that this won't happen for, can't guarantee, but maybe five years or so, right, at least? Is Brian, I mean, are you there?
Don't know.
If it's a long ways, if it's a long ways off now, and they have a full access, plus, you know, people are going to come in from off of Jordan Creek to get to it, too.
Correct.
It just, it just seems like, Chris, if you guys want to change your zoning, we'll get a traffic study and we'll look at it, we'll have better information, but if it ever hits warrants, I think we'll have a conversation with everybody, and if there's a disagreement, the city ought to just figure out who's benefit from it and pay, and if there's a general benefit, the city ought to pick up a share of that. I don't think it's fair to hold these guys up.
Yeah, we'd, we'd agree that you look at who benefits. The, I mean, the one comment that was made by Brian was if there's accidents. Well, obviously, that site is not, got any traffic currently, you know, you don't have any uses on it, and with a coffee shop with a drive-through, I would have to think the opportunity for accidents is going to increase quite a bit. So that's something that, you know, obviously, we have no control over, where the city has said, if there's an accident or two of some different kind of sort, that's when they're going to look at closing that median. So that would be long before we might come in with any minor or major modification to our site. That's the kind of stuff that gives us grief. And then it was city planning department that told our development department that they wanted to close the median earlier than later.
But Chris, if they're putting less traffic on it under the new zoning than they could otherwise, they're lessening the likelihood that that's ever going to happen.
I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying that the likelihood of accidents is not something that, the amount of traffic you put on there is going to have a direct correlation on when those accidents happen. You could have a major accident the first week they opened the coffee store, because people aren't used to traffic exiting that site.
But I think it'd have to get to a point where we know it's a systemic problem all the time to get to close it, and to me, that would be a factor in assessing the light.
Agreed, yeah. This is the first time anybody's ever mentioned that that is a possibility of it being other than the four commercial, or who owns the four corners. So that is, that's news to me, and we would certainly be open to that kind of...
To me, that's the fair way to look at it. If we had to go in and the four corners said, this isn't our issue, we'd do the analysis, and if there was others, those who benefit ought to pay, and those who pay ought to benefit, I still think there's a general benefit to the city, but you have to do the analysis. But we may never get there.
Agreed.
So...
Agreed, and I'm just saying, we've heard way different versions of when this median's going to be closed, so we don't have anything definitive to hang our hat on. And that, this kind of cost is kind of extraordinary for a site that doesn't benefit from it.
Are you guys, do you, do you have a present intention to come through with a rezoning request soon?
No, we've, based on the different access points that we've drawn up, we tried to figure out how we could best utilize if that access was opened up, so we have nothing currently planned. Our development department's kind of running different scenarios by Lynn to see what might work.
Yeah.
But, thank you.
Yeah.
So back to Penta real quick, the two-week, I mean, to a, to a layman who's not in the construction business, development business, I mean, two weeks doesn't seem like it's that much of a delay that would, that would kill you. I mean, is it a closing that's not going to happen then, is it?
We've got deadlines and contracts that we have to meet for construction. The longer this delays...
There's a lot of backend stuff going on.
And I think, Russ, we're not going to know anymore in two weeks than we know today.
Well, that's, that's a question I have.
Yeah, we're not going to.
Would we? Would, would these guys negotiate something on a hypothetical, you know, situation, I guess? I feel more comfortable now, after having the discussion, that if this, if this happens and, you know, I don't know what it is, there's accidents or something, and there's not an agreement on who's paying for this, that we do a study and that, you know, more than the four corners can be assessed, so...
So is that what we would actually vote on?
It isn't what we'd vote on, I guess, but I don't know if we...
It's part of the record. I mean, it's part of the record, that's what we're going to, that's what we want to see done, if it ever gets to that point.
Right.
Okay.
But this is helping the situation, not making it worse.
Yeah, I agree.
Your Honor, Jim Goke, Penta Partners, 210 Northeast Delaware, Ankeny, Iowa. There's a, a point to be made here that I think is getting lost in the weeds, and that's, there is no easement today. We have, Penta has no access to that proposed signaled intersection. We would be dependent upon getting an easement from NAP Properties in order to get access We would be dependent upon getting an easement from Nat Properties in order to get access to that signalized intersection. So if a signal was built today without this proposed easement, Penta Partners would have no access to it. The only time we can get access to it is if Nat Properties were to grant that easement. I think that's when that discussion is had then.
It will, when they bring in their site plan is when that'll happen. And in the interim, if it went in, it'd be hard to especially assess you guys because you don't have access to it. So, I mean, I think that works in your favor as far as any concerns about having to pay for it in the interim.
Well, and if it comes to that later, and there's a study done and says that we're contributing to the load, we would be willing to pay a pro-rata share.
Right, yeah, and you guys might come to the conclusion you're better off having it there anyway with your access easement, so people may voluntarily say that. That's why I get back to a developer's more interested in making sure their site works than the city, or no one will come to your site and no one will lease your space.
Right, but it's impossible for us to anticipate what the use is or what the access is going to be or what the load on the intersection is going to be when they have made the decision on how it's going to be developed.
Right.
And I don't, I don't think it's, you know, right that our development would be held up while they're, you know.
I agree.
And I don't see that there's a decision coming in two weeks from them, but a commitment of what they're going to develop.
I agree.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'd ask that approval of second and third reading and approval of the.
I want to move consideration in the second reading.
Is there a second? Came through planning and development with a recommendation of yes by two of you. Your Honor, your turn.
Second.
Yeah, I think that was prior to the letter that we received at the DIAS at the time the meeting started two weeks ago.
Okay, it's moved in second. Any other questions or comments by anyone in the council? At the end of the day, these guys are putting less traffic on the system than they could have otherwise, and I don't think we ought to hold them up. And Nat comes in for the site plan rezoning, will work through all the issues, and if it triggers warrants, we'll figure out where it's fair and who pays for what.
Given that discussion tonight, I'm comfortable supporting the second, third reading.
Okay, and just so I understand, so that is baked into this motion, what we just talked about?
It's not baked into the motion, but it's part of the record, and so if we come to that point, you know, certainly we can dig out the minutes and prove that this discussion was had and then bring the parties together, and we'll be looking at doing the assessment. And everybody's been made full aware, and the ones that haven't can see it in the minutes. I think Hy-Vee and Wells Fargo are the only two that aren't here that are part of the four corners. So maybe we need to contact them and let them know this discussion was had, but.
I think they'd be happy to have the conversation if we ever get to that point. Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, in order to amend the official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Four zoning districts and map.
Move approval of the second reading.
Is there a second? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Move waiving the third reading and adopt in final form.
Your Honor, second, Renee.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item 5C, Kevell Property, 655 South 88th Street, consistency zone approximately 8.37 acres from unzoned to high-density residential. City initiated, this is an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, in order to amend the official zoning map in the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, by many Title IX zoning, Chapter Four zoning districts and map.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Move waiving the third reading and adopt in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
5D, Grand Valley, generally located at the northeast corner of South 35th Street and Grand Avenue. Amend the plan unit development to modify miscellaneous residential bulk area standards. Rusford Plou, CRVP LLC. It's an ordinance for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
All right, any other questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, in order to amend the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, and ordinance numbers 2075 and 2195 pertaining to the Grand Valley PUD.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
5E, amendment number three to Coach Light Drive Urban Renewal Area. City initiated, this is an ordinance as well for the second, third reading, final adoption, there are no changes.
Move consideration in the second reading.
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, an ordinance deleting property from the tax Sacramento Financing District for the Coach Light Drive Urban Renewal Area of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa pursuant to Section 40319 of the Code of Iowa.
Move approval of the second reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Move waiver of the third reading and adoption in final form.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item six, public hearings. Item 6A, Whisper Rock at Quail Cove, the applicant is withdrawing their request to rezone.
Believe we still have some residents here that would like to speak.
But they're withdrawing it, so, right? They're not going to rezone it.
If I, just one brief comment, if I may. First of all, thank you all very much for listening to the concerns of the neighbors and hope you'll pay attention or enter into the record, the petition that was filed with Ryan, that shows 70 some of the adjacent neighbors were opposed to the rezoning. Thank you.
Can you, make sure you give us your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mike Keller. I'm sorry.
All right, well, we'll make sure that we keep that because obviously, if the applicant comes back at some point in the future for a request, I think everybody wants to see what historically, everybody's position.
Thank you.
Okay, all right, so I need someone to move acceptance of the withdrawal request.
Move acceptance.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, 6B, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter Six, commercial office and industrial zoning district. Modify their permitted uses and permitted conditional uses in the professional commerce park and office zoning districts initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 1st, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the city code amendment.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6B. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. It's an ordinance for the first reading, there are no outstanding issues.
Move consideration first reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I do just have a comment about the heliports. So I see that basically, this is going to make it such that you cannot have, cannot have heliports in vacant land in office, but it will make it such that you can have it on the top of a building or something? And what if that butts up towards residential? I mean.
Lynn Tweet, Director of Development Services, you're correct, you could not have a freestanding heliport go in on vacant ground. It is permitted conditionally. That means the Board of Adjustment will have that authority to say it's not appropriate if you're that close to residential, if they felt there'd be an impact on.
Okay, okay. I appreciate that. I trust the Board of Adjustments, I'm fine with that.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, in order to amend the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, Title IX zoning, Chapter Six, commercial office and industrial zoning district. Modify the permitted uses and permitted conditional uses allowed in professional commerce park and office zoning districts.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6C, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider amendment to city code Title IX zoning, Chapter 15, off-street parking and loading. Modify certain parking and loading regulations initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 1st, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
The Plan and Zoning Commission, by a vote of six yes, one was absent, adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance amendment.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience that would like to address the city council on item 6C. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is an ordinance for the first reading, no outstanding issues, and this was the subject of a city council workshop on November 27th of 2017.
Move consideration of the first reading.
All right, questions or comments?
I just want to toot our own horn for a second. I appreciate staff always being willing to take a look at things. I appreciate, I think, the, was it the intern that we had that was working with us at the time that really delved into this and looked at what other cities were doing, not only in the metro, but elsewhere, I believe, in the state, and, you know, here we are making this easier, more simplistic, easier to follow. So just appreciate all the work that went into this and.
That doesn't sound like government.
No, I know it, we're.
More simplistic and easier to follow.
Running government like a business.
I'll let you toot our horn then.
So thank you to everybody that got into this and came up with these recommendations.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes, in order to amend the city code of the city of West Des Moines, Iowa, 2014, Title IX zoning, Chapter 15, off-street parking and loading, Section Four. General off-street parking regulations, Section Six, design standards, Section Seven, number of parking spaces required. To amend regulations pertaining to off-street parking and loading.
Move approval of the first reading.
Second.
Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item 5D, the city council is being asked to continue this to the March 18th council agenda.
Move continuation.
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6E, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2019-2020 fiscal year operating in a capital budget initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
And have we received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6E. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. This is a motion to continue approval till the March 13th city council agenda.
Move continuation of the approval till March 13th.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Item 6F, actually, 6F through J are, we're going to have public hearings on a number of potential bond issuances, and then as a part of item 6J, we'll actually have a resolution to initiate proceedings for 6F through J. So just to clarify the process we're going through. So 6F, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider issuance of not to exceed $7,700,000 of essential corporate purpose general obligation bonds initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date this notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6F. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We will move on to 6G, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider issuance of not to exceed $700,000 of a general corporate purpose general obligation bonds initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6G. And the projects and the funding of this are all listed in these proceedings, if anyone's interested in how this money would be spent. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Item 6H, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the issuance of not to exceed $700,000 of general corporate purpose general obligation bonds. I guess this would be a series two, maybe, initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6H. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 6I, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the issuance of not to exceed $685,000 of general corporate purpose general obligation bonds initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Brian, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6I. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. 6J, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the issuance of not to exceed $655,000 of general corporate purpose general obligation bonds initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6J. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and we need a resolution to institute proceedings to take additional action in authorizing the issuance and levying of a tax for items 6F through 6J.
Vote.
Is there a second? Questions or comments? All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6K, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the West Public Services Facility Building and Site Improvements Phase Two initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6K. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together. So essentially, we're approving the plans and specifications, receiving and filing a report of bids, and deferring the award of the contract to the March 4th city council meeting. In the interim, the city staff's going to formulate a recommendation on the awarding of the contract.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Comment, this is a really significant project for the city of West Des Moines, to get a new public works facility. We're in four counties, we're operating out of a pretty small facility down essentially down a railroad park or behind, off of Railroad and Fuller. I know Brett and I kind of chuckle because we've been working on this for, I think, 18 years, maybe. So this is going to be a huge benefit to the city of West Des Moines as far as service level delivery, to have this new facility and its location. Brett has approached the DOT, we've approached school districts, we've approached Metro Waste, we've approached Dallas County on whether or not they want to have a part of their operations out of this facility because of where it's located. So we're wide open to collaboration, but this is long overdue and really will be a huge benefit to the city of West Des Moines once we get this up and running.
Your Honor, another thing I want to add is there's, you know, people watching online and those in the audience that might be saying, well, you're taking it from, you know, 16th and Fuller Road and moving it way out west, you know, to 88th Street. It's important to know that we're going to keep the facility down at 16th and Fuller, basically as a secondary facility for operations down there. So you're not going to have everybody going from the west side clear down to the east side like we currently have got east to west. So we'll maintain some presence down there, so I think it's just important to people to understand that.
Well, we've got seven bids and some really good bids underneath what we thought the estimates were, so.
Right.
Very exciting project, but it's been a couple decades in the works. All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6L, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Valley Junction Alley Improvements Phase 5B initiated by the city of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019, in the Des Moines Register.
Or is this, does Dallas County News?
I think that might be an error on that sheet, it's Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
All right, now would be the time for anyone in the audience would like to address the city council on item 6L. Okay, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval.
Move approval? Second.
Any other questions or comments?
I guess I would just ask where we are in the schedule of this. Like, how much longer are we going to be improving the alleys down in Valley Junction until we've improved them all? How many more years of this? Not because I'm getting sick of it, I'm not. I just, we've done this a number of years, and I'm looking forward to getting them all improved.
All right, Brian Hemisath, City Engineer, this is actually the last go-around for the drainage improvements.
Okay, okay.
We've done all of them where people have given us the permission to do so. So anything moving forward would be, if we wanted to do any paving of any alleys, there's some areas in, some of the commercial areas that, I know there's been some interest expressed in getting those done, and then just looking at other potential areas where it might help to pave some of those alleys. So that's where we're looking, Tom and I have been working on that.
Okay, but it's the last of the drainage projects?
Well, the last of the drainage, we could do others.
There's some grading areas farther north that probably need to take place as well, but not with the drainage issues so much.
Right.
Brian, what's the response of those people that have had the drainage put in that they hadn't had it before, and now they have it? Has it made a difference?
It has made a difference, yes. It has made a difference, and there's been a few snafus here and there, but we've been working through those. So some of the things that we run into is keeping it, you know, graded, clear, graded properly, and that's been a challenge for Brett and his folks, and trying to keep the crowns right and everything. It's a difficult thing to do with the equipment that we have, so, but we've been working through that.
And of the approximate amount of alleys that were eligible to receive drainage, I know it's kind of a, if people agreed to do it, so it was kind of voluntary, if you will, how many elected to actually do it?
I don't know, I'd be, I'd say that's around 50 to 60%.
Okay, so I had in my mind too, I wasn't sure.
Right, but part of the issue is then, if there's a problem and they didn't want it done, then, you know, we're not interested in hearing the complaints. That was one of the reasons we did this. We said, okay, there's concerns down here, and we're willing to help you take care of it, but if you elect as a block not to do it, then accept the results.
And we have talked about it though, the Public Services Subcommittee that if, and it happened in one of the neighborhoods, early on, that if you decide later that, oh, well, hey, it is working, so we want it now too, we'll consider that, but it's going to get added on at the end. We're not going to jump them in the middle of this process.
Now that we're at the end, are there any of those people that have come forth and said we'd...
I haven't heard from anybody.
We didn't want it, and we now want it, but...
We haven't heard of...
But that offer's still out there.
I agree with that, Kevin.
Yeah, they're just taking their chances on the timing of it and the funding of it since we're getting through the program.
Right. I wouldn't recommend going out and re-canvassing, but if somebody came to us, I think that would be definitely something we would be interested in doing.
On the paving aspect of it, where do we stand on that? We just, you talked about the paving a moment ago.
We are going to bring that to the Public Services Council Committee at an upcoming meeting, probably within the next, I would say, maybe month or so, to have a discussion. We're, and I know there's some absences for you and Kevin. We want to make sure that you're both there for that discussion, so...
Perfect, yeah.
We'll, it'll be probably sometime in March or April.
So this is improvement Phase 5B, and this one cost $593,610.
$499.
Oh, sorry, that was the engineer's estimate, so $499, $500,000. Have these all been around at similar costs? So we're looking at like $2.5 million worth of improvements to the drainage of the alleys down in Valley Junction.
It's been a little more than that.
A little more than that.
Because of the, there's been a few Phase As and Bs in there as well, so...
Okay.
I don't know.
That's a significant investment.
It is.
It really is.
It is.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks, Brian. Please vote on 6L.
Five yes.
6M, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider the 2018 Sewer Rehabilitation Program initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019 in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the City Council on item 6M. All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. We have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval? Second.
Questions or comments?
This one I always say, but I'm going to say it again. Really appreciate the constant maintenance that we do, keeping up on all of this so that we don't have our infrastructure just go, so...
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6N, this is the time and place for a public hearing to consider Grand Avenue Stormwater Pumps initiated by the City of West Des Moines. Ryan, would you please read the date the notice was published?
February 8th, 2019 in the Des Moines Register.
Have you received any written comments?
None, Your Honor.
Right now would be the time for anyone in the audience who would like to address the City Council on item 6N. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Again, we have two resolutions and a motion which we can take together.
Move approval? Second.
Questions or comments?
Yes, I'd say I'm not looking forward to how this might look down there, but I tell you, the improvements that we've made down there to help the drainage in this area, including this, have been phenomenal between raising Grand Avenue up and some of the grading that we've done there, and now these pumps. This should really help this area, so...
Yep. Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
6O, the Council's being asked to continue the public hearing to March 4th City Council.
Move to continue?
Second.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
All right, item 7 is new business. Usually when there's no outstanding issues, I don't ask for public comment because I don't want someone to snag the feet out of the jaws of victory. If someone here that wants to comment on these, we're happy to have you come up, but if it says no outstanding issue and I'm asked for comments, don't think that we're not interested. It just, everything got worked out, and it'll get approved, and we'll move on. But again, if someone wants to speak, just go ahead and raise your hand, and we'll have you come up. 7A, Willow Creek Villas, west side of Veterans Parkway, north of southeast Willow Creek Drive, subdivide property into 64 single-family lots, one lot for future multifamily development, one lot for detention, six public street lots, and one lot for a future park. Jerry Holmes Inc., this is a resolution to approve the preliminary plat, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval of the preliminary plat?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
7B, Grand Living at West Des Moines, 540 South 51st Street. Approve a site plan to construct a five-story, 180-unit senior living facility. Ryan Companies, it's a resolution to approve the site plan, and there are no outstanding issues.
Move approval?
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, one no.
Item 7C, South 33rd Street and Fuller Road, retaining wall improvements. Approval of Fuller Road Wall Agreement, Benton A. Yost and Heather N. Yost. This is a resolution to approve the agreement. There was a split recommendation at Public Services Subcommittee, so Brian, I might have you come up and give us an overview of where we're at with this.
Sure thing, Brian Hemisath, City Engineer. I'll give you the close notes version of where we've, how we've gotten to where we are. We found out the wall was failing a couple of years ago. We hired Calhoun Burns to come in and look at the structure and give some recommendations on how we could fix the wall. They came up with three options, basically to grade everything back, remove the wall, actually, remove the wall as part of everything, but grade it back at a four-to-one slope, put in some, like a stepped retaining wall, and then also a larger cantilever concrete retaining wall. All of them basically did the same amount of what we call damage to the trees and to the areas out in front of Fuller Road. We took this to the Public Services Council Committee. It was unanimous that they asked us to look at the grading options on all three properties that are out there. We moved forward with that, with the design, and then we met with the property owners to talk that over with all three. Two of the property owners, after some discussion and massaging some things out on their property, they agreed to the grading. And those were to the east of, or to the west, I'm sorry, of 33rd. The property owner to the east of 33rd, the Yost property, they, they thought that they were getting damaged more. They have a pool there, they believe that there was going to be some significant privacy issues. We brought that to the Public Services Council Committee for discussion. We, after some back and forth, we, the staff came up with a stepped block modular retaining wall. The Yosts are in favor of that, they've signed, or they haven't signed yet, but hopefully we'll do so tonight. But they are in agreement with the agreement that's in your packet. But it was a split decision at the committee, but we've had many discussions at the committee level. So that's really where we're at.
So all residents are in favor of what's in here tonight?
Correct.
Yep.
So Kevin, were you the dissenter on that?
Yes, I was.
Okay, you want to just give us a highlight of why you didn't support that?
I don't support it because of the added cost. I believe it's $100,000. All of this takes place on the right-of-way easement. So if the city was doing a road improvement, we would have the right to do, you know, whatever we choose. I don't feel that's really any different. It's still part of the roadway, the way everything operates. This has a huge site triangle issue. If you've ever been at that intersection, if you're sitting there at that stop sign, you cannot see because it's a squared-off corner there. So to me, this improves the road travelability. I just don't think it's worth $100,000. My other concern is that even though the Yosts are going to agree to own this retaining wall, my concern is that years down the line, if something happens, the next property owner, or two or three on down the line, is going to come back and say, $200,000 to redo this? I don't know that kind of money. You guys put it in, you pay for it, and even though it's going to be in the property deed, I still believe they're going to come back on the city, and the city's going to be paying for this thing again if something happens with that wall, so I can't support it.
Okay, so the action before you would be, you're being asked to approve the agreement with the Yost that would have the graduated retaining wall.
Yeah, I can speak to the elective officials, or, you know, I know the staff agrees and the Yosts agree, but from my position, the city owns this wall. The city was failing. The Yosts currently have a level, enjoyable property, that's what they bought, that's what they expected to have for a number of years. We created this problem, so to speak, by having a failing wall. I don't think it's right that we ask them to somehow accept a lesser solution. Frankly, the top solution, I think, we could, I could justify as an elective official advocating for that, and that it was for the cantilevered retaining wall. And I think that caused, the stepped wall is kind of a compromise that we've come up with thanks to the Yosts. But I think the cantilevered wall was maybe $80,000 more than the stepped wall, or $100,000 more. So in my mind, the Yosts, thanks to their good faith negotiations with us, are willing to accept a lesser $70,000, $80,000, $100,000 or less cost to the city. So I'm grateful for that. The second thing is that the ownership of this wall, which has been a problem and a concern for the city, is going to be transferred now to the Yosts. And like as they might want to come back in the future, or some other future owner of that property, the residential property, they won't be able, they won't have any ground to stand on. So to me, that's not valid. And I think we're having a significant impact to their property by having it sloped and not having any sort of retaining wall. So the stepped retaining wall, while I think they're willing to accept it, it really isn't their first choice. It's just, I'm thankful that you're willing to accept that as a choice. I think it's really helpful that we're going to get an improved site triangle at this intersection. Any of these three options provide that, I'm really delighted by that. But most importantly, I think we've come up with a good compromise, both for the city, and we save the city some money by doing this. So I'm going to move this motion for consideration.
Brian?
Second.
I got another question. Brian, you had indicated that they had not signed yet. What have they not signed? And if we take action on this, what, where does that leave the signature?
Hopefully, they'll do that after the meeting, but yeah, if they don't, then...
We're on the hook. So what have they not signed on?
Well, we also, we also have two meetings after this to have a motion to reconsider,
and we'll reconsider it and make it null and void if they don't sign. I mean, that's, you know, they're going to sign.
Okay, so it's on the record.
He's liking the audience, that's why we're here.
He brought his pen. Renee?
Yeah, this is, thank you, Your Honor. I too, I think I came on New Year's Day to visit the property and Mr. Yost, and had a conversation on that cold blistering day to really see and feel and hear this, our constituent out about what was happening. And, you know, I learned a lot about that wall while I was there and subsequent conversations thereafter. And it's very rare when we have a situation that arises where three neighbors come together and they agree on a compromise. Because that's really what makes this better for us, is that we come up with a compromise that's suitable, where everyone gives and takes something in order to make the situation better. And I too felt a little bad when I saw how much that slope was going to cost that look at in terms of the property and the beauty of the property and those trees and all the things that add to the fabric of our community. So that, we're at this now almost two months later with a compromise that I think is doable, given that we get this letter signed, and we don't own that wall. And so the Yosts and whoever can come back to the cows come home if they want to and try to claim that we need to do something with that wall, we don't own that wall. And we won't own that wall if that agreement is signed. So I'm likely to see and celebrate the success of a compromise in this city that I think will be good for everybody involved.
Okay, please vote on 7C.
Amazing how much debate and discussion walls can create.
Yeah.
Oh, that was a little...
We won't go there.
Yeah, exactly.
You got to have fun.
Aye.
Four yes, one no.
Okay, the agreement's approved. 7D, South 33rd Street and Fuller Road, retaining wall improvements. Approval of Amendment Number One to Professional Services Agreement. City initiated, this is a motion to approve Amendment Number One to the Professional Services Agreement.
I move.
Second.
Please vote.
Aye.
Four yes, one no.
Okay, so, and this is for services to fulfill the agreement we just approved. Okay, 7E, American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFSMI, Union Local 3861 in the City of West Des Moines. July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2022, contract period. AFSMI in the City of West Des Moines, it's a resolution to approve the contract.
Move approval?
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
7F, 2019-2020 fiscal year hotel motel tax allocation. City initiated, it's a motion to approve the Subcommittee Recommendation, which is Finance and Administration. Y'all note that they had three committee meetings to hear all the groups on what they wanted, why they wanted it, and I appreciate all the time and effort that Finance Administration puts into analyzing all these requests. I mean, there's a lot of money involved here, and there's a lot of requests and a lot of demands, so we don't take this lightly, and we appreciate that, so. Someone want to move 7F?
Second.
Questions or comments?
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you. I know it is a lot of work to do this, a lot of meetings and going through packets and whatnot, so I appreciate that. So, and I don't know if this has changed since last year, but remind me again how the community at large becomes aware of these dollars.
Well, we'll have Tim come up and do that, but I know that he made, the whole staff made extra effort this time, based on your vote last time, to make sure that we got this out, whether it be on Facebook, send out information, social media, but...
Yeah, Tim Stiles, Finance Director. We did, normally in past years, we have simply published it on the city's website and noticed all the meetings and so forth. But we did take a couple extra steps this year. We worked with Lucinda Stevenson, and she posted some things on the city's website. She posted some things on the Facebook. We also made more of an effort to encourage others in the community to talk, to... We also made a more of an effort to encourage others in the community to talk to folks, you know, people of influence. I know Jim Miller, who's here, has mentioned it to folks he works with and so forth. So we, we're not trying to keep it secret. You know, I don't know if a press release would have been picked up, or, you know, all those sorts of things, too, but we did more effort on the social media channels and through our own website this year.
And we got like, what, three or four new applicants?
We did have 15 applications this year, and three of those were brand-new that hadn't applied before.
And did all 15 of those receive some funding, maybe not their total ask, but some?
Correct. Everyone that applied this year, it hasn't always been the case. Everyone applied this year did receive at least a portion of what they requested. There's been other years where we haven't done that, but.
The rubric, everything was similar to qualifications and.
Yeah, and we asked them a lot of questions. How many other places have you applied for funding? If they, you know, have people that benefit in other communities? Did you go to those other communities to ask for, for support? Many times, they had. There was one that came in here, I think the veterans, what is it, the Community Garden, or not Community Garden, but.
Green.
Yeah, that was one that I think they had received some support from other entities around the metro, and we, we gave them a small amount, but thought that we would contribute to that cause, because there are West Des Moines veterans that benefit from it, so. But yes, everybody did receive some funding, just not the full ask.
And are we able to do a full fund for the public art?
Yes.
Correct.
$120,000.
Yeah, that's included.
Okay, good. Other questions or comments on seven F? Yes, can they say?
More than every time.
All right, please vote.
Aye.
Five yes.
Item eight, receive file and/or refer. We don't have any items. Item nine, other matters. Nine A, legislative update.
Thank you, Mayor Jamie. Let's ring deputy city manager. Just a few to let you know about. The first on our list to discuss is a property tax reform bill. We received our first draft last week, I think on Wednesday, for House Study Bill 165. It's a pretty complicated bill. I've got some bullet points here. It affects a lot of different components of city government. First and foremost, it removes the 810 levy that cities can levy a full property tax valuation times $8.10. It also caps general fund property tax revenues with a pretty complex formula. It includes something that they're calling an annual growth factor to be determined by the Department of Management, but it involves the Midwest median household income from the first prior two years and a percentage of increase, the gist, yeah.
Right.
Provides, yeah, provides a procedure for cities to certify an annual increase beyond the above-mentioned cap, but we would have to have a petition, go to referendum, hold a public hearing, about every public measure that we would need to do. And most significantly, I'd say, for the city of West Des Moines is that it caps general fund reserve balance at 25%. This is concerning, because we're very proud of our AAA bond rating, and our ratings agencies have told us that maintaining a cash reserve balance of around 40% is what we need in order to be able to keep that AAA bond rating. So we're working very diligently on this piece of legislation. There's not yet been a companion bill in the Senate. We've heard that the Senate's version would be different, so that's actually good news. But we'll just keep our eyes and ears open, and staff has been very, very helpful to put together what these items would really mean in terms of West Des Moines and how it would really affect West Des Moines. So we'll keep working on that particular bill, but this Friday, during our legislative subcommittee conference call, probably be asking to take a negative position on that. Senate Study Bill 1095 is the removal of city authority over municipal utility boards. It does have a companion bill, House File 261. We are currently registered opposed. It passed out of Senate Subcommittee on Wednesday, but the senators stated the bill would need to be amended before it moved any further, and I think, Mayor, you spoke with President Schneider on this particular bill. The bill, as currently written, removes the mayor and city council's authority to remove city utility board members. Senators correctly had concerns about the dangers of removing the oversight of unelected appointees who serve six-year terms with no prior work or educational experience required and oversee public assets which are owned by the city. So you can see where our concern is there.
Yeah, and Senator Schneider was, I mean, Charles was our liaison between the council and the water board, and I said this would eliminate any public governing oversight by residents over that board if this, if this law was passed. They would have no ability to do anything with that utility if this passed, because they're appointed, so you can't, you don't have to vote for them, and then you can't remove them if you think they need to be removed. So, I mean, it's, Charles understands what the issues are.
And in terms of our residents or anyone that would watch the meeting later on, if our appointed water board were to increase water rates, you all would not be able to do anything about it. But yet, residents would probably come here first to tell you about their dissatisfaction.
And it's a solution looking for a problem. We've never removed someone, but you always have the option if that was an issue.
Right. House Study Bill 2, alternative project procurement method, held a subcommittee this week. That allows for alternative procurement method for municipalities to standard design build. Under the current system, cities are given proposals which create a minimum project cost, and through change orders, costs can rise. So in the design-build model, obviously, proposals contain a maximum cost or not exceed, and cost overruns are the responsibility of the project manager. They're still considering whether that, whether or not to keep that bill moving forward. So we are currently registered in favor of that, because it affords us some flexibility in projects. And last year, the ability to do a lease-purchase model was taken away from us, so we'd like to try to hold on to any flexibility that we can. One last bill, House Study Bill 100, is the restrictions on lawful pre-existing non-conforming ordinances. It has a companion bill in the Senate, Senate Study Bill 1141. I'm still trying to dig into this one exactly, but it prevents cities from adopting an ordinance that infringes on a property owner's non-conforming use unless that use poses a threat or is abandoned, or the non-conforming use is enlarged. So trying to decide whether or not that matters to us, and I'll need some help from Dick and from Lynn Tweed on that.
Sounds like that's a specific situation that somebody's trying to address, where somebody said, look, you're legal non-conforming, now you, the property's changed hands, sorry, you're done, and they're saying, wait a minute.
And opponents state that the bill is kind of case law in a codified format, so, you know, that makes me automatically question moving forward, but. That must be it. And that's all I have. There's other ATE automatic, or traffic enforcement bills, but we're just monitoring those, because that really doesn't involve West Des Moines, so. Any questions or? We haven't been able to decipher that. My ways and means of sponsoring, Julie Bloomingdale is currently the chair and the bill sponsor. As of last Thursday, I think, when we talked Friday morning, she had not read the bill, so.
It's interesting they didn't ask cities even to get involved with any part of this bill.
We have some theories, but maybe.
There's a guy smirking down that I think has some insight, but he's, might not.
Well, I think the, I think the intention, you can see what the intention is there, and the intention is to say that if your family income hasn't gone up, we're not going to increase your, we're, we're going to limit the ability of government to tax you based on how your income has gone. So if your income hasn't gone up as a family, you know, you're not going to have to pay this heavy tax burden that the cities are putting on you, because you don't have an ability to pay, essentially. That's what they're trying to do, I believe, with tying family income to the growth limitation on property taxes.
Yeah.
Right, right.
We get to verify income.
Yeah.
Right.
So if their income doubles, do we get to charge them more?
Well, you're looking at it as a, as a area.
But it's, it's an area, it's not individual.
Area income, so.
The trouble is that it really caps any organic growth. We experienced, you know, significant by Iowa standards, organic growth outside of our urban renewal districts, and this model caps us on that amount of growth, so.
Well, we're not increasing tax rates. We're trying to, and, I mean, that's the incentive to grow as a city. The cities are the economic engines of the state of Iowa. So this is really perplexing to me, when the state of Iowa's only grown 100,000 people in 10 years, and the cities, who are doing well, export income tax, sales tax, road use tax to the rest of the state to use. So, and we have, I've been here for five public hearings for our budget. We're not hearing a hue and cry of people upset. Now, I keep hearing that that's the issue, but we kind of joke around, but I'd like, if we took the, it's because some people pay it every six months, and it is a big bill, you know, your property tax. If you took your income tax from state and federal and social security and said, we're just going to send you a bill every six months, you don't have to take out your check, we'd all have problems writing checks, probably. So I, I'm not, I mean, this is kind, I mean, the city should have home rule. You're elected. I'm just, I wish.
School boards are elected, they have taxing authority, county boards are supervisors. I mean, we do surveys. We're not perfect, but 90-some percent of our residents feel there's value here. If local option sales tax passes, we're going to have an 8% reduction in our property taxes. I don't get it. I think they have enough issues that they probably need to address that they're responsible for, and leave the rest of us alone.
Wholeheartedly agree. The unintended consequences, Tim Stiles said earlier today, is that the safe harbor area is for urban renewal districts, so then does your whole community become an urban renewal district? But then you can, once that 20 years is expired, then all that growth is gone, and you don't get to cap, you don't get to capture that and tax accordingly. So it's, it's a big problem. I.
Okay. Thanks, Jamie. Does any other council member want to raise any other matter tonight? All right, we're adjourned.